Okay, you're on the flag, Luke, please. Flag's leasings.
To the flag, the United States of America, until we look up, forces standing, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Bourbon County Commission Meeting, and everyone watching on YouTube, of course, we're live, so. We'll get started.
I can motion to approve minutes from previous meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Eric Bailey, sir. Come in.
Good morning. Good late.
We have several things to sign this morning. First one is for a culvert extension, 920th Street, for John Burwell.
I make a motion we approve the culvert extension on 920th Street. Bring it in.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Next one is for Paul Hopkins at 2528 240th. It's another extension.
I make a motion we approve this culvert extension at 2528 240th Street. Vote yes.
Eric, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next one's for Thomas Russell, 135th and Maple on the northwest corner. He doesn't have an address yet.
So, I move that we approve a culvert for Thomas Russell, approximately 135th and Maple.
That'd be a pretty area.
Yeah.
Second?
Second, sorry.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That pretty area out there, 135th and Maple.
Sure is.
Beautiful area. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The next one is for a new culvert for Larry Snyder, quarter mile north of 205th and 31 Highway, the west side of the road.
Make a motion we approve a culvert for Larry Snyder at 2379 190th Street. Vote Kansas.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have our 2022 management plan for our noxious weed department. I want to give Andy Johnson a lot of credit. He's put a lot of time and effort in into this report, so I got spots back here. This one here doesn't have exactly who needs to sign where. There's three spots for the commissioners, but the next one we'll get ready to do is an actual spot for each commissioner and the chairman.
Let me say, when you picked Andy, you excellent choice.
Yes, yes.
Super individual.
Yes, and he would've been here this morning, but they've had a death of the family and had to travel out of state, so.
I make a motion we approve the 2022 noxious weeds management plan.
Eric, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'll just... Time to get over you.
You're running out of here, man.
Yeah.
Rider's cream. Next one's the annual noxious weed eradication progress report. This one here has an actual spot for the chairman to sign, and then the two commissioners.
We get anything eradicated?
I think we did a little bit last year.
So, I make a motion we approve the annual noxious weed eradication progress report for 2022.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Do you see any changes coming for us, noxious weed, adding anything to it?
Not this, Miami's been the class the last week, so I haven't had a chance to really set out a deal with.
Yep.
I do look for chemical prices to go up.
Yeah, I do, too.
Really?
How's his truck doing? Okay?
So far, we're doing good.
Good.
And we have set some money back.
Good.
Thanks, we do have a problem.
Thank you, thank you very much, so.
Thank you on that. I don't have agenda in front of me. Let's see, mowing, snow removal, that's not me. Next that I have here is hay bids. It's that time of year again. Ashley asked me, since she's not here today, if I would visit with you on this. We have the two spots, the one at Elm Creek, and then the one at Native Road, which is the old landfill. I would recommend maybe considering the radio tower that was purchased. There's approximately three acres there, 1131 250th Street.
Makes some good hay. It's a good list of these in there.
Yeah, and we've cleaned it up pretty good, got the brush and trees and stuff out of there, so need to go back and look, make sure that we don't need to clean some stumps up, but I think that would make some pretty good hay there as well, if you...
I agree.
So choose, so anyhow, I don't know if you need to make a motion on that, or whether to just go out for bid, or how.
Go out for bids and bring us the bids, I believe, Eric.
Perfect, okay, and we're good with doing the three acre?
I am, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Let's kind of go down through here. Bridge at 115th and Range, it's, the void's been filled, and it's been concreted back over, and they were opening it up this morning, so had a little difficulty keeping traffic off of the fresh concrete, but anyhow, we made it through it, and moving forward there. They're now headed out to 30th and Ivory. We've got some scouring out there, and another void that we need to fill in as well, so.
Is that going into the Lake Elm Creek?
No.
Or I mean Bourbon Allen?
It's back, oh, quite a ways back.
Is it?
It's the big concrete one that goes across as you're going up the hill, so we got a void on the bottom.
Talking about.
Right, got a void at the bottom, we got to fill in, and then fill it up so it'll quit washing out, so that's where we're headed next on that.
It's been doing that for quite a few years.
Right, right. Calling for another storm again this week, we'll see. Hurt everywhere from just a trace to one to five, so I take your pick, we'll see what we get, and move on forward with it. Reminder, work session next Tuesday afternoon, one o'clock for the asphalt. We'll bring you some prices on what we think it's going to cost us to produce asphalt this year, but as we all know, fuel was...
Well, yeah, and as you know, well as I do, I have to be cautious, because every week that price is probably going up.
Absolutely, so.
With what we're seeing on the national news, so.
Right, our 6422 oil, they've locked us in at 560 a ton right now through May, I believe it is, so.
Through May.
Who knows on that, so.
I mean, you don't want to be caught on the other side when it starts going down.
Right, absolutely.
Everybody thought 2008, it's never going to come back down, and guess what it did?
It came back down.
It crashed, so we certainly don't want to be on...
Absolutely.
Side of it where we go ahead and buy a bunch, and...
Right.
Not that I think it's going to go down anytime soon, but...
So, we have to buy it, and then pick it up?
Yeah, the oil.
And you got to...
We do it on a load-by-load basis.
Tell May?
Yeah, so.
We'll still be quite a way before the end of the asphalt season.
Might be a year for more gravel roads than asphalt road.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Really, that's something we'll talk about next Tuesday.
Talk about next week, but I kind of want to get this out, so we're thinking about it ahead of time, and what have you, and, you know, and we'll have to think about the diesel cost for our trucks, too, to haul the gravel and what have you, I mean, and the asphalt, so.
It's going to get rough.
It's going to get, we're going to have to tighten.
Let me tighten.
Windmills, still working on the final punch list, had a conversation with Jeff Spangler yesterday on that. We are following the road use agreement, and doing everything there, so just kind of giving you an update on that. And then, last but not least, that I have, and I think it may be on the agenda somewhere, but 240th and the railroad tracks.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
What is your own?
Take care of that, sir.
Yep, okay.
Says railroad crossings.
Railroad crossings on that one? Okay.
Yes.
It does say it on?
Yes, it's the private highway road report.
Oh, okay, it wasn't on the original one, okay.
Okay.
But thank you for addressing that.
Yes, and it will be, the one at 240th will be taken care of a week from this Wednesday, working with BNSF and their maintenance crews, and we will extend the culvert, and get done with that one. We're going to look at a couple others that are in dire need of being extended as well, so anyhow, that's kind of where we're at on that.
I appreciate you getting to that.
No problem. Also, your text, I called this morning and took care of that situation as well, so...
Thank you very much.
We're good to go with that.
You're a busy guy.
Anything else for me?
No, you've took care of everything I've asked.
Okay, all right, well, nothing, then, I'll, that's all I've got.
Yeah, our meeting next Tuesday, I'll be interested, because, you know, I think the president's going to declare no Russian oil this morning, and so I don't know if Europe's going to follow, but that's going to impact our costs on the rock you haul, and the asphalt you make.
Absolutely.
It could double, triple, really.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm like, Cliff, and it will go down eventually.
Eventually, yeah, so I hadn't heard that yet, so, okay, all right.
Thank you, have a good day.
You, too.
I think this mowing snow removal is from the hospital, just because it's been 30 days. We want to table that forever.
I think, well, it's going to turn to mowing season before too long, but I think we should table it, at least, let's see, let's just... Till the 29th.
Okay. We need, we don't need a motion of that, do we?
No, just have removing.
Yeah.
Table till 29th.
Very good. Discussion of liquor sales in the county. Justin? My understanding, we have some interest in liquor sales in the county, and they've been told by the state that the county has to have a resolution in place with some guidelines before the state will license body in the county, is what Ashley told me.
I don't know, we've been doing liquor licenses at Hidden Valley for years.
Beer or whiskey?
Beer.
Beer, this is whiskey, this is liquor, so it's different.
We got somebody that wanted to sell whiskey.
Yeah. Justin?
Mix.
Would you like to comment on these liquor sales? I just explained to him what Ashley told me, that we need a resolution with some guidelines.
Yes, it's at your guys' discretion. I mean, I did do some research on it, we're a non-suburban county, so we have no, you know, rules with regards to sales. I mean, obviously, in Fort Scott, they have, they're closed on certain days, some days till eight, that type of thing, but you guys can just follow the state guidelines, or you can make what days you want to be open and closed, that type of thing, so.
But we have to do something.
Yes, I mean, you can either, all or nothing, I mean, you can do either ends of the spectrum, it's completely up to your guys' discretion.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, you can follow what Fort Scott's doing, or you can just say state guidelines, which would be, I think, on Memorial Day, Fourth of July, all those days, so they can be open, so.
No sales on Easter, or Thanksgiving, or Christmas Day?
That's it, those would be the three that are...
Everything else is pretty much open. On Sundays, it goes from like noon to something.
Yeah, noon to eight.
Noon to eight, so.
I think that might be the state, I'm not sure on that part.
No, I think it's a, in time of the day, for state, the city just has...
Yeah, cities is till eight.
Look, you want to look at the cliff, that's the city rules.
I mean, I, you know, the rules that the state's put in place...
Yeah. I don't have a problem following what the city's doing, as far as their guidelines, and...
There are days that are closed, out there, or in addition to those days.
What's nice for us is the local alcohol tax, something that we've never really received, is a third of it goes to your general fund, a third goes to special parks, and a third goes to special alcohol fund, so the revenue coming off of that would be new to the county, but by statute...
It's going to be a huge windfall, but it'll be something.
Yes, but it'll be something. And right now, you levy for special parks and special alcohol, so at least, maybe you wouldn't have to levy for that anymore. Don't know.
That'd be good, that'd be nice.
The state guidelines are fine with me, as far as I'm concerned.
We need to make a motion to follow, you, someone put together a resolution for us to follow this case?
Well, we need a resolution, I need to cover your bases to follow the state guidelines, I'd have it ready to go at the next.
Maybe we can approve a resolution at that time, if we choose to. Okay, very good.
Great.
Thank you. Ms. Laura Holder.
Jim, also on that, the city then presents the certificate and city charges, and so that might be substantial.
Yeah, well, and share that with...
Yeah, I'm glad you spoke that up.
That's a lot of money.
They charge five feet.
That's a big fee, $600.
I'm not in favor of charging our small businesses.
I'm not either.
While we're waiting on more, I got a window in my car.
Okay.
Straight permit, they just don't permit.
We're going to take a five-minute break. Susan, you want these? I don't want them.
Oh, yes. I do.
I bet the girls were heartbroken, weren't they? That's so sad.
It was such a hard loss.
Oh, we just going to believe that all they have to have is state permit, that we're not going to ask them to do anything for us?
Well, I have...
I think we're going to ask them to do a permit?
No, permit, but it can be free, or something, just to show they've met the guidelines of county slash state. They probably get a state affidavit, too, for all the licenses, don't they?
Because it'd be nice for us to have that data, so that we can track.
Yeah.
They're right to have an annual liquor...
Yeah.
You know, every two years, so we'll be able to capture whatever we need to capture at that time.
Yes.
Isn't it the same cost, 50 bucks? For the horses?
Yeah, the, in the event that they won't pay their sales tax, or their tax...
Thank you, thank you very much.
There's a report that I can get, only one person in the county can get it, there's a report I can get from the state, and I can say, hey, they're not reporting, and I can call the state and make them follow up. So there's some...
I know the part of that is, are these going to be liquor stores?
You want to know if that's two separate entries?
Liquor stores?
Yes.
Any other?
I'm saying it's a good example, how it's separated.
Okay.
Get that a separate area.
Not going to be private clubs?
No, no, it's a convenience store. Sure. It's at a convenience store.
You don't have a phone, do you?
It's just that, it's just sectioned off.
So, how about when they get in the process of selling food, like restaurant type food?
Well, we probably should...
Because they're going to have the same restrictions.
Well, then, when you're talking about this, we're discussing about, because there's some questions happening in the, so, state statute doesn't allow, I mean, a restaurant is liquor by the drink, so on premise, liquor by the drink is different than packaged retail, so, under Kansas law, packaged retail, you have to have a separate entrance, you can't, like, let's use a convenience store, for example, if you go to Missouri, they have a section that is liquor, and it's all open, well, in Kansas, you can't do that, you have to have a separate entrance, separate wall, it can't be the same store, so like, we have some really good examples within Fort Scott, where you have, you know, other businesses located within the structure of that liquor store, but they're, you can't have an open, you know, open air kind of thing, like a market, you can't do that, it has to be a separate entrance.
So the state...
Or a door that, you know, you have to...
Every student, they would get that information from the state.
Yeah, we're not, that's, when I say follow the, yeah, when I'm saying follow state statute, the state of Kansas is going to regulate your construction, your codes.
They did ask what the requirements would be for their store, and I said, who are you talking about?
That's on, that's on the state.
And does the state send an inspector to check that wall, and door out, etc.?
Because what they, they won't be able to get their licenses, they don't follow that. We don't, we don't have anything to do with the licenses at all.
Good, good.
It's all state. They can't, you know, they can't, you can't, like, let's just use one of the honey lodges in the county, they're going to have to follow state statute if they want to have a liquor store, I mean, they're restaurants, so they can get their liquor license and do liquor by the drink, but they have to open, you have to open a convenience store, you can't just open it up and put alcohol in there, you have to follow state statute with the laws.
Very good.
So really, what you guys control is, if you go outside of the state statute, you win it was open and closed, basically, what holiday you choose, but the state has its too.
Okay.
Does that one work?
What's that?
Does that one work?
No.
October, October.
I don't know if it's going to work, because the telephone.
Justin's going after her.
She's off it, this is the next thing, can I help you? She just went down a few rounds and checked and see if you guys were already...
She's on it.
You're welcome.
She went, she went over there.
She went for the work.
What happened is, he opened the file, a lot of people come in, it's the first person who gets it, in carton, we're like, baby, two.
She went, she went over there.
She went for the work.
What happened is, he opened the file, a lot of people come in, it's the first person who gets it, in carton, we're like, baby, two.
I'm stalling for time.
Morning.
I didn't think it would be that quick, I was doing other things this morning. Okay, actually, I was going to, Patty?
Sure.
To come in, since I wanted the other department heads. You know, next Thursday, we go to Anderson County for the 17 county meeting, then it's our turn for the 17 county meeting. September or October, need to try to set a date. I've called college, and I've called the school, they're not, they don't have any dates that they're going to be off during, except for Labor Day and Thanksgiving break, the UT 34 doesn't have a schedule for us yet. We've kind of brainstormed a little bit between Ashley and Susan about wanting to try to get them down to downtown area, to see, but we want to make sure that it is convenient, a time that's not only convenient for everybody, for Matt, for Patty, you know, for everybody, it's not during running of the taxes, you know, anything like that, so we need to pick a date, think of a date that works for everybody.
And Ashley and I talked before she left last week, and we really feel like September's the better month, because there's so much going on during October, would you agree with that, both of you?
I have a lot of things I have to turn to the state and stuff, about that time, so September would be better.
Is it the end of September?
And I don't know if we necessarily have to set a date. Jim, you've been to several also, can we just say that we can announce a date?
Yeah, about July, we need to put out a date, end of July, first of all, this is...
We just invite them to the Bourbon County.
And each department head has a kind of meeting with their group, as you know, you've been to them a hundred times, and...
So we got to find a place where we can split everyone off.
Well, we talked about, you know, like, there's, Papa Don's has a celebration room, the Liberty, maybe, Hound Nutrition, of course, they moved, but Jared Leaks still has that, the Empress Liberty, the Ford has a meeting room, Common Ground has a couple places, if the emergency management is going to meet, they can meet at the EOC, we figured the sheriff might want to have his at the jail with, in your meeting room out there, we need to figure out where we want to have it, where we're going to meet in the morning for sign-in, where we're going to have lunch, who are going to try to get to cater it, we're talking freebies, you know, we want them to donate their rooms, we want to, so we're going to be meeting, we're going to put together and do some of this during our department head meetings, but we're going to be looking at donation of places, hopefully discount, it will cost us, of course, for the lunch, but try to get discounts, work with the chamber to get welcome bags, I know one year we did Bourbon County coffee mugs and stuff, and we've come up with some cheap, some ideas, but this is something that every county does, go through the alphabet, and so it's something that...
I think we have a pretty good plan, as far as hoping that we could all meet at the river room, have a meal there, and then have walking distance to get to the breakout sections in the downtown area, and also, really focus in on all the good things that are going on in our downtown area.
A lot of times...
And go back there for lunch.
Yeah, and then go back there for lunch.
And go back to the room, river room for lunch, because a lot of people stay and shop. Anyway, I know the deeds office does, and a lot of the deeds people are antiqueers, and they like, like the Iron Star and stuff, so...
Something we might think about, I don't know if it's a good idea, bad idea, let's put it this way, everyone, including Justin, but years ago, the equipment company picked up the lunch bill.
The what did?
The equipment companies.
Yeah, I've just called them.
One I supported, very tractor, paid for the whole lunch, it was like $3,500, but we were glad to do it, so.
I want to reach out to some of our bigger companies that we spent money with, and ask for door prizes, and all that, so I'm kind of...
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, we're, and then we're also going to ask each department to do a door prize. I don't think that, like, some counties, everybody gets a gift, you know, that's something for us to talk about, I think we all, I don't necessarily think that everybody needs to get a gift, I think the department, each department can make a gift, but we'll, again, go over that kind of stuff, but if we don't nail down a date before next Thursday, which is our 17 county meeting in Anderson County, whichever commissioner is going, that's the one that usually stands up and invites them to our county, and if you don't have a date picked, then you'll just say...
September.
Sometime in September, look for upcoming notifications, and we'll do it, we'll go from there, but somehow I got kind of roped and started.
Ramrotted.
Ramrotted, yeah, 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 ramrotted. I did not...
Let me know if you have any help with equipment companies, I call them, I know them.
And get, get started, and try to get, you know, like you said, the lunch, get them to get the lunch, and get stuff, and get our...
Thank you.
Rooms volunteered.
You know, one of the things that might be nice, if we could pull it off, is to get Jay Hall to come down to the commission side of this thing, on our meeting, and go through the legislative stuff.
You need to reach out to him, once we get a date set?
Yes.
That would be really nice, because usually we have a speaker at lunchtime, and that would be good. And that would be good. And usually each department, um, sets up their own speaker during their time, but that would be good. C I C usually does the breakfast. Um, I'm just gonna reach out to, um, Deb, Trey Ann and see if, if they would still pay for our breakfast. Cause C I C usually always pays for all the seventeen county meetings breakfast.
And Deb will be glad to help, so.
Yeah, yeah. She's, I mean, C I C is paid for just about everybody's, uh, breakfast. And we have C I C throughout the county, so, um, I was gonna get ahold of her and see if she would do that. And so then we'll just make sure we-
Yeah, that's a great idea. I'm glad we're gonna showcase the historical fort and the historical downtown, that's great, so.
It's why we would like to have it within walking, all of our meeting rooms within the walking distance so they can see what we've done with the downtown area, that would be really nice.
As you mentioned, there are several places that will handle small groups, so great idea.
Yeah.
Great idea.
Is there any, any questions, any ideas?
Anything you need help with, let me know, I'll be more than glad to help.
Okay.
I've been through this many times, so.
Well, I just heard you volunteer to call some of the-
If, if Eric wants, ask Eric, he might want, if he wants to talk to them, that's fine, but if you need help, I know the owners of the companies, so I can contact them and most likely they'll just say no.
That's right, that's right. The only wrong question is the question you never ask.
Yeah.
So, that sounds good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks Laura.
Okay. Thank you Susan for doing this. County councillor.
I have one executive session on the agenda, um, I need to add another one for personal matters that Susan and the three commissioners and myself, I want to probably take about five minutes. Um, got some information this morning that I wanted to disseminate to the commissioners via Susan and myself. The executive session is actually gonna probably be, needs to be about fifteen minutes. I did get some more information about, um, some contract issues this morning. Um, so we need to discuss those and kind of figure out what we're gonna do and what our plan is. With that issue too, so whatever you wanna do first. Probably one with the personal matters is probably, I'd go seven minutes probably. And then the executive session fifteen, when I come back out and go back in if need be.
Make a motion to go an executive session under K S A seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. It will be, uh, three commissioners, county councillor Meeks and Susan Bancroft. We for seven minutes, we'll return here at, if I wait eighteen seconds here.
Check it.
No, I haven't said it yet.
Yeah.
Oh, you haven't?
No, he waited on the clock.
Forty, forty.
Seven minutes, we'll return here at nine forty.
We're gonna need one more executive session for personal matters.
Any, any discussion?
That's what this one is.
For another one.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oh, you never had to go for five minutes, huh?
No, I had to go to the car. But I don't need five, maybe just a few minutes.
Okay. Give me a couple of minutes.
Make a motion to resume normal session at nine forty, no action.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Take a five-minute break, please.
Good thing you said please. Dave Brunner in on this one.
Huh?
Dave Brunner on this one for ten minutes.
Okay. Are we ready?
Sure.
Make a motion to go into executive session. KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. Be three commissioners, county councilor Meeks, Susan Bancroft, and Mr. Brunner. May for ten minutes. We will return here at nine fifty-three.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Fun day.
Make a motion to, excuse me, to resume normal session, no action.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Susan.
Update on financials?
Turn that mic on. Update on financials. We have worked through, we wanted to make sure we got through January because there was some hiccups and some of Patty's work in January. And so we're at January 31st, and so she's going to work through February and try and get us caught up there. So hopefully within the next two weeks I will have December, January, and February because I'm still working on some journal entries. So I want to make sure that everything's very clean. So that's why I'm taking my time to kind of comb through the financials. The other thing is, is we had another directors meeting, felt like it went really well. Out of that meeting, we've really had a lot of discussions about policies and procedures and how we do things, and tightening up on some things. And I'm talking like work comp, general liability type things. And so what I would like to do is put together an administrative policy handbook, and it'll be sectioned off. It'll probably take a good year for us to get through that, but really talks through how we handle certain situations. Someone has an accident, how do we handle that? And so within that administrative policy handbook will also be a personnel handbook that we're working on. And I've had good feedback from most of the, the directors or elected officials. And so I feel like it's, it's been very good for us to get together and really start working together on some things. So, and that's all I have.
Yeah, that's simple. Thank you. Public comment?
Okay, and this is probably more for Susan, and I'm sorry, guys, but I did watch last week and took some notes. Susan, can you provide again clarification or some understanding of these audit violations and how they affect grants that we go over? And I mean, how come we're still in violation? How come that didn't get cleaned up? And how, what's going to be done different so that hopefully we're out of this, this cycle?
Let me grab my book real quick and we'll just walk through some of those violations.
Okay.
I've been actually working on that, so had it right at my finger.
Okay. So letter dated September 10th of 2021. So mind you, you're almost completely through 2021 when we got our final audit. And so anything that happened before that period of time, it's going to be very difficult to, to change if it's, depending on what issue it is. Okay. So October tax rules is probably our biggest audit violation that we're going to have, and it is big because too much money was paid out to the taxing entities. And so what that does is it leaves our cash balances in a negative. So we overpaid them. And so that couldn't be corrected until the January distribution in 2022. And so in that January distribution, she just reduced the amount of money that was paid out to the taxing entities. Nothing we can do about that. Said it was a system error. I have no validation of that. I would have to go back through and read like the CIC notes, but that's something that Patty completely worked with CIC on. So I would have to get with her to find out more details on that. But that will be a clear audit violation, and it affects about 50 funds. So you have to have, you're going to have 50 funds that are running a negative cash balance.
Mike, for the whole year?
Yeah, well, yes, that's your, at the end of 12/31 of '21, there'll be 50 funds that are in the negative. The other reconciliation of cash and bank to the county's accounting records, that has been complete. That is, we will not, we should not have a violation of that this year. We've tied out all those records. Right now, the things that I'm doing is to make sure that we don't have any budget violations. And so when I talk about that is, is if, if things are not booked correctly, so if an expense is booked and then a revenue is booked into an expense account, then that could show us understating our expenses. And so those are the things that I'm fixing. So if I'm seeing a receipt come in and an expense line item, I'm moving that receipt out of the expense line item and putting it back up into a revenue account. Because that has been some of our problems in the past. We've not coded things correctly. And so revenue has to go into revenue line and expense has to go into an expense line. And so, you know, when you're going through about six or seven thousand pages of financials, it takes some time. But I'm looking at each one of those line items to make sure that those are correct. Reconciliation of the annual tax rule, that was one of our audit violations. That is the one that I was just talking about. There will still be an audit violation for that. Public works billings, that was fixed the very first part of January of 2021. I'm happy to say Jennifer has done a great job in that area. She's got everything lined back out. And the, approximately the hundred thousand that we were short has been collected. There's maybe about 10,000 of that that we're going to have to write off. So I feel like she's done a good job of going back through the books and making sure that's taken care of. We also have some controls that we've put in place at the landfill. And so how they reconcile their cash every day, and we match it to reports, that has also been put into place. And that was done right away at the end of 2020, beginning of 2021. Preparation of financial statements, that is something that we're still, that's what I'm trying to get to a point where we're monthly, we are producing something to give to the commission and the department heads, because to be quite honest, they have not received a budget report in months. So that, that is a concern. But we will have everything, I want to say ticked and tied, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. So getting things caught up in the treasures office has probably been the most challenging. So, but I feel like we're, we're getting there. We're much closer than what we have in the past. Other control issues were the motor vehicle fund at the treasures office, and that is something I'm talking with Patty on this week. Audit adjustments, you really don't want your auditor making your audit adjustments to your accounting records. And so the, the work that I'm doing now to kind of correct some of that should clean up most of that. And then there was also one on inmates funds and putting them in a separate checking account and how those monies are deciphered. And so there's really, that's like, that's some internal controls that we need to, and we haven't gotten to that point yet with the sheriff's department corrections. And so that'll be the next big thing that we tackle. The other one was the county attorney's diversion funds, same situation as the inmate funds. And then there's always that concern with rotation of duties. And the reason why you have rotation of duties is to catch any kind of fraud that could potentially be going on. And so we're trying to work towards that, like in the clerk's office, they have several different people that do voucher-ing and checking those things. We'll have to get to the same type of situation in the treasures office. Again, that's just working with each one of the elected officials to make sure everything's working correctly. Let me see if there's anything else here that he really pointed out. But when you ask about grants, it specifically asks you on these federal grants, have you had any audit violations? And I have to answer that yes. And then it will say, what type of audit violations? Well, the ones that I'd be really concerned with would be like the billings. That means we didn't have a very good internal control system going on there. The preparation of financial statements is a big one. And then not matching cash to, cash and bank to the accounting records, that's another big one. I mean, there, that is, we're not going to show favor with those kind of violations. So for 20, at the end of 2021, I think we will have addressed most of them. But like I said, we're still going to have some violations for 2022. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Do we have a policy in place on these whistles that are being put in? Do we have a certain size limit?
Well, we have a very extensive handbook on culverts and right-of-way and easements, et cetera. So I'm sure nothing changed. Our folks have enough experience to, they're looking at the ditch now. If it's a big ditch, they'll do a water hydraulic study from ag engineer.
Okay.
Get that information. And then they tell us what size we need to put in. But if it was just a standard driveway, we pretty much have to size it up with the ditches there.
Right.
Within reason. But anything with any size, we go through ag engineering, do a hydraulic study, and they tell us what kind of pipes, size, how many. It's a big help. So yes, we do.
Okay. I just, I didn't know.
Yeah, we do.
All right. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Elected official. Bill? County commissioners?
I made an announcement this morning, about half an hour evening meeting, and evening down on March 22nd at 6:00 p.m.
Good.
I'll do it again next week. So make sure we get, get that out to the public as, as much as we can.
Good.
20th second?
20th second, 6:00 p.m. City Hall, evening.
Susan?
Yes?
Did you get any response from any other cities, Bronson, down south?
We have a chance to call them. We're on it this week.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anything, Clifton?
Yep.
I just have one thing for the commissioners. It's time for the county commissioners to pay our dues, to become, stay, remain members of the county commission associations. It's $534 for all three of those for yearly membership, and I recommend we stay in that organization. A lot of good information. So I don't know if I need to make a motion or just sign it.
I'll make a motion. We continue your presentation in the KAC.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.